And the pictures you submitted showed Sunday morning and commented about the church group that uses most of the parking space. Do they have any other services through the week?
Um, they do, um, they have, uh, I know, um, I think there's a church or something along those lines, or like a group, um, but that's typically like three or four, like how they should make it there. Like on average outside of that block, um, it's typically less than a hundred car per block.
Yeah, 'cause then that could mitigate the parking restrictions.
Uh, I'm sorry.
That could mitigate the parking restrictions. Make it less of a problem.
Yeah, I'm just looking at their website to see if anything like listed like their calendar.
Um, also regarding, um, the two business taking charge of space for the two businesses, um, I am willing to, uh, like reduce the amount of customer service area, um, to accommodate, uh, more parking spaces for, um, Harold or we don't, I'm sorry.
Oh, I mean-
But he's the other end that you guys want to talk about. Um, so the parking, uh, the parking map, uh, title that, uh, did not permit that that was required, um, it was essentially like, uh, something in customer service area, and I am more than willing to like, uh, give away customer service area if I sort of accommodate, uh, Harold's parking spot if that's a problem.
So, um, how that works, I think, and Kelly can correct me if I'm wrong, but, um, similar to like how your current resolution has a restriction on the number of occupants for restaurant uses, um, you know, you can talk to Johnny and the other applicant about, you know, what those restrictions could be and make it a part of your action. Um, I think also, again, my calculations were conservative. Um, so upon, you know, discussion with the building department, I think as part of the building permit process, um, each of these applicants is required to, you know, have a maximum occupancy load issued by the building department. Um, so I think that that's something, you know, that you could consider as well. Um, but that's just an option for the board.
No, and I, I, I know, and I know typically, yes, you could defer to the traffic zones and have a full, uh, workup done. We did too hot with the, with the usage, with the tables, which, I know we've got two relatively small businesses in front of us and I'm trying to kind of work with them and not-
Understood, yeah.
Make them go through that whole process of getting a traffic consultant to look at IT tables and tell me how many people could potentially be there. Listen, we don't, I mean, personally, I hope you're successful and the parking lot's full, you know, when you guys are doing well. It's... No, we still gotta have a couple hearings. We don't have to make a decision on parking or anything tonight.
Right.
But I think, I think we're at least, we're in a spot now that we could schedule a public hearing before this applicant has the board feel about that. I know there were a couple things you had to get back to Natalie. When do you think you'd be able to get that back to her, bud?
Um, that's why I was like, oh, I did everything she requested.
Oh, you should probably have a chance to look at what he's giving you today, right Natalie?
Yeah, I'm gonna, um, take the water and sewer demand form and talk to Mickey about that. Um, and then aside from that, I think the only thing that remains is, you know, we just talked about the parking, I think, at length, so if the applicant is going to reduce his number of occupants or wants to make that part of his proposal, then he should submit that to you to consider at the next meeting. Um, you know, just so that you can kind of further that issue.
Yeah, I, but I also want to hear from the next applicant too, because they're in the same shopping center, so I kind of want to get a feel for what their business is gonna be like-
Yeah.
-as well before we tell the applicant to start reducing space if they don't need to.
Yeah, I think, you know, my recommendation would be just to ask the applicants to work together and-
You guys know each other or...? Okay. So would that be a hard, I know we're not up to you yet, sir, but would that be a hard ask for the two of you to sit down and kind of look at your-
We can have whatever, because I don't have a problem with that. Uh, so whatever, you know, locally decided, I have no problem with that.
Okay, so why don't you two, before, we'll, we'll schedule your public hearing. So maybe before your, your public hearing, you two can sit down, come up with something in writing between the two of you that would work and how your business models will, you know, maybe, you know, his demand's gonna be all at night and your demand's all gonna be during the day, or however that's gonna work out, present it to us. And I think that will let us make a better decision, uh, for the application going forward. Is that something you can get done in the next couple of days, you think?
I mean, easily.
Okay, so we'll give you, uh, make a motion for July 6th, public hearing?
A second.
Second, any questions?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, all right, so I'll see you back on the six, sir.
Okay.
Last but certainly not least, HLB Enterprise review and discuss documents submitted for proposed interior renovations and conversion of existing leased space into a restaurant use. Said properties located at Unit 9 of Old Glory Mall, 95 Mary Lane. It's known as the Village Woodbury Tax Map Section 225 Block 1 Lot 41. Good evening, sir, how are you?
Good evening, um, Sebastian Paulson, Mr. David Paulson, Mr. Harold, this evening. Um, so I think, um, well, we had a disadvantage here to do away with some review comments we've been done. But a brief overview of the project, uh, Mr. Harold's looking to basically convert the space into a restaurant facility. Um, it would be minimal, I would say, to do renovations to the space, you know, just to accommodate the restaurant functions. Exterior renovations, so minimal to the signs, but it's out of China. Um, the, the big thing, I guess, you know, you mentioned was, I guess, previously it was defined as a nightclub, um, but really it's, it's a restaurant. Um, we will also, however, have a live band on occasion, but nothing, you know, at grand scale just to kind of accommodate the patrons, you know, so a small stage and so forth. Um, so we're just kind of looking for feedback on the board tonight as far as what they may require from Mr. Harold to this, to move this project.
Wouldn't you say, uh, a small stage or is it just like people come in, they eat, and they listen to the band play? Or is it like specifically, is it more to eat and then have music there while you're eating? Or is it more to come see the band and have a good time while the band is playing? Does that question make sense?
Yeah, it does. Um, basically what I'm gonna do is, um, I'm gonna have people come in, sit down, and enjoy it. I'm also painting, um, yeah, I'm having the band, as far as, you know, band is, I have a couple of the kids that play inside on the Woodbury. I'd like them to come in and, as he's called, who say they rock, rock player, have their fans come in and hear them play, uh, that's one of the different events that I have.
Okay.
It's, it's, uh, when I say it's stages, it's a area where I just want to step on, like, the, you know, to buy food on the floor.
Like a race platform, not like, uh-
Yeah, nothing like, it's not that big of a space. This is much bigger. So it's not gonna be a bunch of people, maybe twenty-five, maybe thirty, if that many, uh, even in there at a time. So as far as what Johnny Paul can, I don't think that would be an issue because we have a little, uh, parking. And, uh, I go to the church there, so there in the evening, I mean, during the daytime, especially Sunday, I'm not gonna be listening. I have another business to run there because, uh, of time, I have a workshop there.
So like breakfast, dinner, and just dinner or lunch and dinner or not even dinner?
Uh, dinner and lunch, and it's a bunch of people. Most of the stuff I'll be getting is stuff that came over.
Oh, okay.
Because I'm not gonna have no kitchen.
Okay.
Okay, I'm not gonna have, it's no special wall back there, and it's untapped.
So like appetizers and drinks and lists-
That's all. And, uh, and for innovation, paint on the wall and lights, and I'm bringing chairs.
Okay.
No couches, uh, table, that's just, you know, I'll be alive.
So like paint and sip parties and stuff, stuff along that line?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Paint, like a paint and sip type of party?
Yeah, that, uh, that he's like, come in at one in the morning time, or the afternoon, even, and do soup and paint. Um, because I'm, my wife and my daughter, if they're wondering, they like to do things like that, so that's why I thought the design of this place, Old Glory Mall, has been vacant for a while, so that's why I chose this, you know, area there, so they have something to do at the time.
Okay. Question, one more comment?
Sounds better than a vacant suite.
Any other comments or feedback or questions for the applicant?
What, what days you plan to be open?
Uh, well, Sunday, Monday, Sunday is definitely when we close, it's on the day, so we, that's good. We, maybe that Thursday, Friday, or Friday, Saturday, uh, Thursday, Friday, Saturday. It's, I'm not gonna have it open, because like I said, I'll be in the other place just to meet for now. Get coming in, but we can clean, or get a couple people cleaning, but it's not gonna be every day.
Okay.
It will be the afternoon, probably at five, eight, five to eight or nine.
Now are you gonna be able to rent, is anybody gonna be able to rent your space for whatever they want to do or?
If I'm allowed to do so, uh, if people would like to, yes, that costs, well, insurance, so they would have to get their own insurance, uh, if they want to do that, but, um, I'm, so around that one, it's, uh-
Oh yeah, I mean, it's really, it's your vision, this board, that's why, that's why we're trying to fish out what you're looking to do, because-
I love jazz, always vision to have a jazz place, I play music, yes.
Go ahead, guy, I see you.
I'm, I'm, I'm just confused, because I thought the, the way that it was presented in the application was like a restaurant with jazz music, that sort of thing. But now it sounds like a place for the jazz music, but takeout from the Dice Bowl? So I'm just trying to fake, put it into-
So the Dice Bowl is gonna make the food for your place, right?
Right.
Oh, so it's like a shared, like a shared kitchen type thing or?
Yeah, I would, I would, well, not only that, there's other business cosmos or whatever it is. I would have food for the people to come and sit down and listen to the jazz music. It's, it's, because I don't have a space for no kitchen there.
Okay.
The space is bigger, he's right there, uh, there's total, there's, uh, some Mexican place there. I would give food for them, because I don't have a kitchen.
So you would like have the food on site, how would you, how would somebody order the food? I'm just trying to fake, put it into a use.
I'm sorry, I would order the food.
Okay.
And I would have to trade foods there for the people.
Oh, for the people to then purchase from you?
Almost like a catering type hall type of thing, it almost sounds like.
They, they're gonna receive the food.
That's probably, uh, the cost of food is probably part of the cover charge or?
Yes.
Oh, cover charge, okay. I was wondering where you were making any money on this too. I'm like, this is not making sense.
And would county health department be involved?
I'm sorry?
Would the county health department be involved?
Would the health department?
Right, so even if you're not preparing the food, if you're going to be storing it and serving it?
Well, I, I, I would-
That's really a question for Kelly, if, if county health would be involved.
I have to look, because now this use is not at all what I thought, and so I have to figure out where it falls into your code and then see if it's something where they might need, um, like a catering hall would need some approval from the department of health. So I need to see what it falls under in your code and what it falls under for the county. That's why I'm trying to ask some questions, because I'm, I was confused.
Well, now that I have the better understanding, when you, the restaurant is what threw, I think threw it very off. When you say restaurant, people are expecting you to have a kitchen and prepare food.
Yeah, like, yeah, prepare and service.
Can I, can I, so because there's an dining, so there is some health department regulation that may fall over the finishings and so forth, like whether there's an area, you know, experience and so forth.
Yeah, but to, with, with our code, our code specifically spells out what a restaurant is, what a fast food restaurant is, um, that's, that's kind of why we're asking the question.
Village Code?
Yeah, the Village zoning code actually has definitions of what a restaurant is, what a retail establishment is, what a fast food restaurant is, so that's, so this board has got to make sure we flush out what actually is gonna be going on in the premise, because it doesn't actually sound like it's gonna be a restaurant at this point. So now we've got to kind of figure out-
And then that applies to parking, water and sewer, things like that. So this is good flushing out, because I was down the totally wrong path.
Right, it completely changes everything. A restaurant has all sorts of other requirements for how many parking spots you have to have, whether it's based on tables and square footage. So now that you're not actually a restaurant and you're going to be like an event space, we kind of got to figure out what that would fall under in the code. I don't think we have a, a event space, right, like?
No, that's an, well, event, venue is not a currently permitted use in your code. I'm just trying to pull it up now, and it looks like maybe restaurant and drinking establishment as one, but I have to see how that's defined.
You gonna have a liquor license?
Well, I'm gonna, it's gonna be fair, fair, fair.
So, but that, you still gotta get, that's still licensed, right?
Yes, so fair, so our license, the fully licensed, five, the first-
And no BY, like, no BYOB, right, no bring your own, was right? All right, that's, she's scrolling.
Yeah, sorry, I, I'm thinking it would be that, but then I just need to see how it's defined. So if the board has any more questions, keep asking. I, I appreciate you letting me get rid of the confused look on my face.
Yeah, do you anticipate having any dishwashing service? Dishwashing service, are you gonna use all disposable or are you going to?
Disposable. So, so if I hear your vision right, it's gonna be a room with chairs, a, a small stage, and a buffet, like a buffet station and like a small bar with beer and, beer and wine. You'll get the food brought in from other establishments, it'll be in the buffet table, just for the sake of a better term, beer and wine, soda, water, whatever. And at the end of the night, it all goes in the dumpster, vacuum the floor, and you're done. Okay.
Um, is, is there any exterior renovations, signage?
I'm sorry?
Are there any exterior renovations, like signage proposed?
There'll be the signage for the establishment, so.
Just the existing, whatever's there, right?
Oh, right, yes.
You replace whatever's there.
There will be some design.
Okay. I'm sorry. We want to make sure we send you in the right direction when you leave here too. I know Natalie, you had a few comments, but I don't know if the discussion we just had kind of-
So, well, the first thing I wanted to say is I think you indicated you didn't receive our comments previously. David Namaco, okay, because we did send it to him, so, um, should I resend it to him again? Okay, okay.
Send it to me?
Yeah, do you wanna, I'm, maybe after the meeting, you can give me your email, okay, um-
I should want to, you know, put it on the tape for everybody.
Yeah. I almost had to do that, so. Yes, so one of the things that, um, you know, we discussed in our memo is the provision of a floor plan, which I think actually would help, you know, you've now described it verbally, but showing where the stage is and, you know, we would have been able to sort of identify that there wasn't a kitchen and things like that. So a floor plan of your space with dimensions, you know, showing the overall area and any, um, areas specifically designated to, um, the, you know, the stage or customer service or, you know-
That doesn't need to be done by, they can draw it out themselves, you don't have to do that by then.
Yeah, no, I mean, I think as long as it's dimensioned and we understand, you know, what the area is of your space, that's helpful, um, although, you know, David Namaco and your team are, are more than capable of doing that, so, um, I'll defer to you. Um, we will need to consider parking and obviously the waiver that was discussed with that last applicant, so I think that some of that needs to be flushed out with the use determination. So that would be specified in the code and the code requirements, um, based on either area or number of occupants. So we'll look at that a little closer when, uh, that's decided. Um, you know, you guys did submit a projected water and sewer demand form. We asked for, um, supporting calculations and, you know, the basis of that, those estimates, um, which, you know, really, based on what you described, it seems maybe this is, those estimates may be a little high, but, you know, we'll flush that out, uh, as we move forward. Um, we will have to review that form with the sewer department for a typical. Um, if signage, you guys are gonna be proposing a sign, so there are requirements in the code for signage, so please review that section. I don't have it specific in here, but if you need help finding it, you know, either Kelly or I are happy to help with that. Um, and then the last thing really for the board to consider is, again, not to go back to this 1991 approval, but technically there is a prohibition on live music, so that'll be something that if you want to approve as part of this application, you're amending your prior applica, or your prior approval, so.
But we've, I mean, that's well within the, what we've amended.
Oh, yeah, yep, it's just a reality.
The newer member knows that we have in this board in the past has, uh, I don't want to say overturned, but allow, like, remove restrictions that were on previous site of plans, so it's not something that would be new, this board to know.
Yeah, that is well within your purview, and, and we can work with the building department too to see if we can find any minutes around that time, to see if there was a reason. I have no idea.
Probably people on the board, did want anybody to have a good time?
Yeah, I guess not, I don't know. Um, a couple of things I did want to mention just quickly is, for the board, this is a seeker type two action. Um, it was referred to the county for GML. They responded in May saying it was a local determination. Obviously, as you were discussing, a public hearing is, is required. Um, different from the last application, an application was made to the Board of Trustees for a waiver from the moratorium. Uh, Dice Bowl was granted a, uh, waiver from the moratorium. The Board of Trustees was asking for additional information prior to acting on this one, so at this time, that request has been denied. Um, however, hearing everything tonight, I think that they did not understand what this application was for either, what it was presented as was, as a restaurant coming in. So, um, that may be additional information that should be presented to the Board of Trustees. That letter should be going out to the applicant in the next few days, if they're aware of it, but I just want to look forward now.
And you said, I'm sorry, Dice Bowl does have a waiver from?
Yes.
Okay.
They received that on, hold on, uh, June 9th, oh, last week, sorry. Losing track of time.
Yeah, so, so other than, I mean, this, this board has to consider the waiver for live music. I think the, the big question right now is what is, what do we consider this, right?
Right.
Yeah, and one other question, are the restrooms sufficient to support a, I don't know what the previous use was, but if it's a event hall or whatever, eating establishment, are the restrooms sufficient to service people?
So I guess what are the restrooms, um, based on?
Well, I think, I think that's what we have to look into. That's a question that should be addressed.
I think looking at the use for IP district, I mean, my idea would be that it were commercial recreations and then it's used, but it sounds like it falls in that category.
Correct. All right, well-
I think I'm gonna have to do a comparison, and then I'm also gonna have to speak with the building inspector for his determination as well, um, just so that it's clear and we can give the applicant clear direction in this board as well.
Yeah, I know, not the greatest news to get tonight, but I think now that we have a better understanding of what you're looking to do in that space, it gives this board and our council of engineers a better idea of what we need to tell you that has to happen next. Um, we can't really tell you what the next steps are until really we figure out what use this will under. Once we know what use it's classified as, then we can tell you what you guys, what you need to, what you need to do there. All right, Kelly, I'm not-
Well, actually, I think this meeting was very helpful. I, I, that's, again, why my face looked confused. So I'm not sure if the, if the board would like right now. Um, it would remain a type two, whatever the use determination is, as far as seekers concerned, so you could make a motion to declare this to be a type two action, because it's the reuse of a commercial space.
Yeah, I'll, I'll make the motion to declare this a type two action as a secret.
A second.
Second, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
So I guess right now you're gonna have to sit tight until you hear from-
The two of us?
To one of, one of either Natalie or Kelly. It's, I know it's not, like I said, I, I feel bad, I just, I, there's no other, there's nothing else I can tell you we can do until we know, but it's tight that, and that's gonna mean, uh, council's gonna have to work with the building inspector.
Yeah, and also, even though you guys are coordinating the parking consideration, they're separate applications, so one doesn't hold up the other.
Yeah, and it's just from overview, it sounds like they're not really gonna overlap too much each other based on what Johnny is stating and what you're stating you're gonna do there. It sounds like your uses are really not gonna be on top of each other maybe, all at once. So I don't think parking's gonna be that big of a concern, but we still, it's still something this board legally has to contend with. We just can't willy-nilly say, no, parking's fine, and just take, go with it. Um, we get yelled at by our council when we start doing things, so we start doing willy-nilly things like that.
And we can relay that as well, um, with the applicant and David Namaco, so that any changes that need to be made can be made to you and they can get back before you to continue the application.
Yeah, so I mean, what I can tell you is probably, what you need right now is you're gonna need to update the layout, uh, the, the, we're gonna need the drawing of the inside, uh, your potential, uh, operating hours. Um, and I would probably revise the, the narrative, um, to describe better what you described to us tonight, because the, the narrative we have and what was described to us tonight are two totally different things to us.
You get that.
So, uh, you know, that it's going to be, um, a sit-down place for music, for chairs, only brought-in food, there'll be no cooking on premise, no, none of that on premise. That's why I was, like, was confused that the store was a restaurant.
You said floor plan, right?
And the floor plan is building, how you want to lay it out.
So, I mean, uh, it was, it was, it's, uh-
So based on narrative, basically, you described-
Right, I understand that, like, what you're saying.
There would be to classify it.
Right, I, 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 yes, you understand it, but I would say it was classified as a restaurant, so what I'm saying is not classified as a restaurant.
We have to see based on how the village code defines restaurant, to make sure you still qualify as that. You may qualify as something else, which then has different regulations.
Right.
So what we had seen based, and what you were saying, didn't seem to, weren't the same, so we just want to make sure it still is a restaurant?
So, right, if it's classified-
Or if it's something else?
I'm sorry, if it, if it's classified as a restaurant, so the things that I mentioned as far as the serving of the food and to listen to the jazz music, can not be implemented?
No, no, we're not saying anything is, is a problem.
It is classified as a restaurant, so, uh, basically-
Previously, Harold had talked to the building department-
Right.
-about what he wanted to do, and the building department told him that capital resistance was the classifying as a restaurant.
And that is likely true. I just haven't spoken with the building department yet, so, again, since the narrative that was submitted and what the narrative was tonight differ, I need to talk to the building department to make sure he says, yes, it's a restaurant, and then we can give the green light to the applicant to proceed. I just don't feel comfortable going any further right now without knowing exactly what use this is under your code, so we can make sure that the right regulations apply.
Yeah.
We don't, we don't want them to go straying down a path and then have to turn around and doesn't reflect well on any of us, so.
We actually don't want you to have to do the unnecessary work or unnecessary design work or permitting that you may not need to do based on what the building department classifies for that.
And we don't want you to have to spend any more money that you don't need to spend, so that's why. Cost is always a big issue.
So how soon do we have to get through the stuff like that?
You're gonna ask for tomorrow, aren't you? I am booked tomorrow. Okay. I'm using the 22nd as my date to like get these things accomplished from tonight, so, 22nd. Claudia's gonna call me and be like, did you do all this? I'm gonna be like, oh. I'm writing it down right now, make determination by 22nd.
Any other questions or concerns for our, for this board?
Oh, I'll take it.
We'll see you as soon as we get, uh, the classification and the new information. Um, actually, I do want to go back to Dice Bowl. Um, we are having the public hearing. I didn't realize you had a waiver, I don't know why I didn't pick up on that.
Oh, sorry, they do, they have a waiver from the Board of Trustees.
So I would like to make a motion to have council draft a resolution of approval to go with the public hearing, being they do have the waiver already.
Second.
Second, any questions?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Just so we, you know, if things go well, your public hearing and you, that, then we don't have to make a comeback for another meeting, so.
Hopefully, everything's not that long.
Well, hopefully you don't have a big outpouring of people that don't want the Dice Bowl there and-
Which means you should work out the parking stuff by the 22nd. Everybody's gonna use that date, it's 22nd.
All right. That's it, um, I'll offer a motion to close.
Second.
Second, any, any questions? Anybody want to stay?
Okay, let's start for future meetings.
Uh, we will be going back to virtual, um, because the state has just changed, uh-
Whoop, she has a question.
What's the question? You're good? So, um, our next meeting will be virtual. Um, I think it works a little better, uh, that's what we will be at. Until the state says no. Unless you guys don't want to sit. I think the virtual meeting's worked out much better for us.
Okay.
All right, thank you very much. Do you want? Thank you very much, do you want, do you want to take my copy?
Oh, yeah, I'll get to it in the audience.
Okay. Thank you, sir, have a good night. Take care, sir, good night. That was either Chinese or Mexican.